Good evening, everyone. Today is June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is a special session of a unified government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely as well as on-site. All participants joining by phone should please mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name every time you speak, as well as your title. So the public that is participating knows exactly who's speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Please be sure that while you're speaking, speak directly into the microphone at an audible level that where you can be heard. That is to ensure that your comments are being heard and can reflect an accurate record of this meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Clark, roll call, please, and announce the meeting as well.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Garner. You're hereby notified that I've called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five P. M. for a budget workshop. Roll call, Johnson. Commissioner Kane has an absence memo for this evening. Commissioner Markley. Stites, Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Kieranin.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Garner.
Here. For clarity, this meeting is the ongoing budget process of your unified government presentation. So your unified government commissioners can make an informed decision and have all the information they need moving forward as we prepare for the twenty twenty-four budget. I will now turn this meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. David Johnson, and he'll take the meeting from here.
Well, as is customary, part of the budget process is you take a look at the capital needs that we've identified as a community that need attention. This is an integral step in developing the county administrator's recommended budget. What you'll hear tonight are some options. We promised that we would look at options as we deal with the wider budget challenge on the city side that we talked about. So you'll be seeing these challenges that we'll still have under consideration as I prepare, staff and I prepare a final budget recommendation to you to be submitted sometime in August. So we'll, we'll start this. So is this Reggie and Debbie show again?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Reginald Lindsay, the Unified Government Budget Director. I also have with me Jeff Fisher, Director of Public Works, also Brandon Grover, part of Public Works, and then also Debbie John, she's our interim CFO, and then also Angel Ferrera, who's our Parks and Rec Director. So what we're here today to do is we're here to talk about our twenty twenty-four, twenty through twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program. One of the things differences this year is the M that we usually have in C M I P is now Capital Improvement Program. So we have dropped the M from it, which is maintenance. One of the things when Jeff Fisher came six years ago, he constantly asked the question, why do we have maintenance as part of our Capital Improvement Program? And then also when Administrator Johnston came, that's probably one of the top three questions he asked me was why do we have a maintenance in our capital budget and why are we issuing debt on our maintenance? So today, what we want to do is go through and talk about some of the wins we have had in the past year with our Capital Improvement Program and some of our needs in our Capital Improvement Program. As we get to this point within the organization, we have had meetings with four different core groups that we have within the organization. So we have a core group for technology that's related to capital. Also, we have a core group that's related to infrastructure. Also, we have a core group that's related to facilities and then also a core group related to equipment. And those different core groups kind of run like committees where we have subject matters on those particular topics that know, you know, if we need the new technology. We have John Kelly, who knows about what we need to have done with facilities, who consults us on those. And then we have Brandon and Troy over in Public Work that consults us on what needs to go on infrastructure as far as streets and bridges. So as we jump into the presentation, what I'll do is turn it over to Jeff Fisher, our Executive Public Works Director.
Thank you, Reggie. The first thing that Public Works will look to starting this year and each year beyond is to, is to the Outcomes and Strategies document that we worked hard with the subcommittees over the course of about a year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then County Administrator recently asked us to revisit this document with the subcommittees, and that's been updated. And this will be our guiding document from Public Works and some agree Parks and Rec in developing each year's budget and making recommendations to the county administrator. And some of you may remember the big priorities of that document are streets, bridges, and facilities. Streets, as you might remember, about four years ago, our average P C I pavement condition index was fifty-six. Our goal was to get to sixty-five, and four years later, it's dropped to fifty-one. We know we have a lot of work to do there. Bridges, we're going to talk more about later, but we know we have strategies and desired outcomes in the document regarding bridges. And then, and a big funding shortfall there. And then generally around facilities and parks, it's about right sizing in that document. And you know, the last four or five years, we've been working real hard together to be data-driven and to use that data to tell the story that people can understand and then set priorities. We've worked here real recently with the help of Dave Reno to create a visual that we hope will help you all remember eat more easily what those conditions are. So this is our shot at that. This, the important, the two important things to recognize in this visual is the color gradient for each of those categories. They're a little bit different because the grading skills that we use in those categories are a little bit different, and then the critical threshold below that. So in the case of streets, we're at an average of a fifty-one, and it's declining. So, and then the critical is thirty, and then with bridges, it's green, kind of green, so that's good. But it's also declining with a critical threshold of twenty-five. And then with facilities, it's quite a bit different, but we did best we could to sort of normalize the three. Facilities, the Buildings and Logistics Division has done an excellent job of being, utilizing the resources that they've been provided, particularly with ARPA, that's been helpful the last couple of years. But it's steady, however, we expect that to decline, and that's mostly because there's just a lot of square footage to cover. I'm going to hand this over to Brandon, talk more about bridges.
Thanks, Jeff. Brandon Grover, Project Manager for Roads and Bridges for Public Works. For the past several years, you've heard us talk ad nauseam about P C I scores, twenty-four hundred lane miles, all the other metrics that go into our roads. You've heard the same thing about pipes for our storm and sanitary systems. But we've never really dove that deep into explaining to our bridge network. So I wanted to throw some of this data-driven information out to you guys for that, so you can make some educated decisions, especially with bridges being such a hot topic right now. In total, the U G maintains two hundred and ninety-six bridge structures. All those structures usually have an average lifespan before they start showing some serious deficiencies of about fifty years. Of our two hundred and ninety-six, two hundred and forty-one of them were built prior to nineteen eighty. So the vast majority of our structures are at a forty-year, forty-three-year life right now or greater. So as we start looking at that, that's going to start coming into play, and as we've all seen, bridges have a quick deterioration, you know, from year to year. One can drop off at the, at the drop of a hat as soon as an inspection's done if it's not appropriately to handle traffic. The first graph you see there is a bar graph showing five-year increments of what our network will potentially look like. So like right now, you're looking at, you see a really small purple amount, which is our closed structures, which is five. But just in the short matter of time of twenty years, if we don't start spending the amount of money we need to maintain these, we're at twenty-seven closed structures. That goes from about two percent to nine percent of our total network. You can also see that we've got about a hundred and sixteen right now that are good. But in that same timeframe, we fall to sixteen. So we lose a hundred in good condition in a matter of twenty years because of where they're at in their timeframe of their life. That's a huge, huge thing to consider moving forward because every time these bridges start dropping and every closure we have or every limitation we have on weight limit that these bridges can handle, that's an inconvenience to the citizens. It changes the response time for our public safety officials. So there's a huge, huge impact. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I apologize to my colleagues for my lateness. Does this assumption, does this assume that no other work will be done over the next, whatever it is from twenty twenty years?
Years. The, the, the projected outcomes is based on the current funding level of three hundred thousand dollars a year. What we've been proposing and saying for the last year or so is we really need about fourteen million dollars a year. Our total network bridges is worth about three hundred and sixty-one million dollars. So in order to address those, that you see what kind of scale we're looking at. And we can show you these graphs and throw out the numbers all we want, but what really shows is these next couple of slides. So this slide right here is.
One more question. Sheriff Ramirez, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. No problem. For that amount, two hundred and ninety-six, is that a common amount for a city to have?
So.
Around the metro, around the country, two hundred and ninety-six. That seems like a lot of bridges that we have.
So this ties directly into what you've heard in our stormwater conversations about the number of drainage basins that we have. Wyandotte County is in a really unique position because having the rivers on each side and the high crest that runs to the middle of county, we have a lot of drainage basins. So every time you have a small tributary or creek, you have, in a road that goes over it, you have to have a box structure. This is far surpasses most of the other surrounding metropolitan areas, even those that have larger citizenry or larger geographic area, at least double most of them.
Okay.
So like I was starting to say, this graph, or this image right here shows our network currently. You see a lot of green dots, a lot of yellow dots, some of the red, and the purple kind of jumps out a little bit. It kind of blends a little bit right now in this image, but that's what our condition looks like right now. If we don't start spending that amount that we've been talking about, this next slide illustrates what our network is going to look like. You see the green pretty much entirely disappear. You see the red grow exponentially almost, and the purple start jumping out. And several of those purple dots are on some pretty major corridors. So we've really got to start taking a harder look at what the needs are for our bridge structures.
Thank you, Brandon. This is something you're familiar with. U G's been working on a system for scoring and ranking unfunded needs. For a few years now, we continue to work on that each year to get better and better. This is a list, this is a short list of about a hundred and fifty total. We marked off a few there that have been done and one that we just removed because of the right sizing idea around facilities. But about a hundred and fifty projects that have either been identified by the elected body, staff, or the public. And so those are scored and ranked. And then, of course, we've mentioned in the last year, we have this new tool for the public to access, and they can put in a request that might end up turning into a project as well. So the activities of last year and this, just a few highlights. Of course, we're working towards making repairs on the Kansas Avenue Bridge this year. We hope to open that back up by the end of the year, if not first quarter of next year. The annual street preservation, of course, that's an annual program. I will note here that forty-three lane miles that will be done this year is the most that's been done. And that sounds like a lot, but it's under two percent of the entire network. And then the curb replaced, that seems like a lot of curb. That's a fraction of a percent of the system.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the Kansas Avenue Bridge replacement, I know that the commission approved that amount last summer. Is, just for clarity, is there some reason why it takes so long or something, you know, we're looking at a a long period of time to just open it temporarily? What, what causes that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's generally a supply chain issue with the steel. Yep. So we, there's a large lead time on ordering that. We ordered as soon as we could, as soon as we had enough design to do that. And then, you know, we hope that contractor will be able to make that repairs earlier than we're projecting. Sort of managing expectations. Seventh and Central intersection, thought that was a very successful project. That's done. Safe, will be a safe routes to school project. We have the Pearson Park Fire Station.
Got another question for you. Oh, sorry. Okay.
First, just to comment, you know, over at K C A T A, to your supply chain issue, I think we have a one-year lead time when we order a bus. So it's ridiculously real. But I, my question on Seventh and Central really doesn't have anything to do with money. I just am curious if you can help me understand the why of that design. When you are heading east on Central and you take the little angle instead of going to the intersection, used to be able to go ahead and go north, but it's all, was that on per, I mean, I had to have been on purpose. It just stunned the first time I took that, and I'm like, oh, I'm not going to turn left here. I'm going to turn right. And I thought, well, what's the purpose of having the road? If your only choice is to make a right turn. Anyway, just help me.
I'm going to ask Brandon to speak.
So we looked at that intersection for a couple of different things, and the one that stuck out the most was safety concerns. With the intersection that you're talking about specifically and the one directly across the road from it, there were some sight distance issues of coming over the hill if you're heading south on Seventh Street. And the grant that we applied for and won for that project from K dot was for geometric improvements and safety improvements. So the design featured into that for that purpose. You'll also notice that if you're continuing south on Seventh Street, you'll see the, the, the lane configuration change. It used to be four lanes that you could never use all four because there was parking on the outside. So we worked with K dot to come up with an approved schematic for that that allowed for parking and kept the appropriate traffic level going through. So there were a lot of thought that went into that. So adding those medians in there to limit those turning motions was a safety concern.
And I really like the lane configuration at Seventh and Central a lot.
It's one we're actually talking to get out about continuing up towards City Hall, continue, that way we don't run into those issues of people driving in those parking lanes. So, so there's.
Done that quite a bit on the Seventh Street portion of that project.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Lastly, is the City Hall stabilization that's ongoing right now. John Kelly, been eager to do that for quite some time. And then I'll hand it over.
Is there anything, I know there's been some concern from Senator Petty and some others, they've reached out. We talk about that intersection, if you can go back, where the new fire station is and the egress ingress and maybe a safety concern at that intersection.
And that'd be the whole Douglas, Douglas and Keelane project situation.
Yeah, just, I'm just looking for an update on.
Yeah, I believe that's on the unfunded list. That one's been there for a little while.
I'll turn it over to Angel Ferrera.
Good evening, Commissioners. Angel Farrar, Director of Parks and Recreation. So we'll go over a couple of our highlights as well for projects. We did receive an increase to our budget, so we were able to build in a little bit more. So happy to report back out on some of the great things we've been doing with those funds. So a few of our highlights, got some pictures to align with some of these. We've completed the replacement of the handicap dock out at Wyandotte County Lake. The old dock was in need of repair, so it provides for safer experience for more inclusive users, you know, when it comes to fishing and some of the other amenities out at, out at the lake. Also, earlier this year, we conducted some creek dredging out of Wyandotte County Lake, just our ongoing lake maintenance. So that took place earlier this year. And what we did here was dredge Marshall Creek ten feet down the middle and then three feet around the bank. So that is just to help with flood control and other issues that we were starting to see some flooding over the bridges as well. We've been working to maintain our trails. So earlier this year, before summer got kicked off, we actually were able to send some staff in-house to do some of these seal coats, add a few of our trails listed here. Vega, Ruby, Albee, and Matney. By being able to do the in-house, we were able to save a little bit on costs and to kind of get more of the seal coats done. Our staff worked really diligently to get that wrapped up before summer. There are probably three more parks that we will be looking to overlay, which is a little bit more extensive of a process. So we'll be looking to contract that out the probably fall of this year. And so for those trail projects, we're looking at possibly Thompson, Wellborn, and Parkwood as well. Another highlight is replacement of some key playground equipments that get used often. So you might have seen on Facebook, I think we've got it posted, but we just recently wrapped up the Hope Park Playground Installation, and we'll be looking to celebrate that here in July. So more information to come on that. We will be replacing West Height Park Playground here in the next few weeks and also Wyandotte County Lake Park Main Playground, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. Again, I want to note the lead time on that. I think we've been waiting six months for this equipment to come in, so. Few more wins that we've had. So we shifted funding from what used to be our annual restroom replacement program to annual shelter repair maintenance. And so we'll, our department will be taking a more intentional and focused approach on repairing some of our shelters. So starting with some of the priorities, we'll be starting with shelters ten, fourteen, and sixteen out at Wyandotte County Lake. And then, you know, moving through our priority list over the next few years. Another project we have teed up that is currently in design is walking, a walking trail at St. Margaret's Park. So excited to get that one kicked off hopefully in the fall. Utilization of our community center improvement dollars will be doing some maintenance on four to five gymnasium floors, just re-sanding those, rebuilding those back up, and also striping them. They get a lot of use. So I know staff and the community is excited about that one. We've also been able to do a few improvements, additional improvements are working towards that. And I've been working really closely with John Kelly's team and Building and Logistics, utilizing some ARPA funds. And then also wanted to highlight the Boston Daniels Park Project. This is an exciting project that we've been working very closely with over the last few years with the Boston Daniels Corporation. And our department received one hundred and fifty thousand through the budget process. And there's also a significant investment of C D B G dollars in the amount of five hundred thousand also going towards this project. This project's also currently in design, so we're looking forward to keep working through that with the community.
We have a question. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you, Angel, for everything that you and your department do. Do you remember by the percentage how much we increased your funding last year?
Want to say it was a quarter mill, Reggie. Debbie, could you verify?
Quarter mill. Okay. Now, would if we had not given you the quarter mill raise, would any of this have been done? Or would have been done to a certain degree, I should say.
Yes. So there's a handful of these projects that were made possible through the quarter mill and increase. We probably would only be having maybe one page with, you know, just some of this annual funding that we've received in years past and, you know, not been able to do some of these extra projects.
Okay.
And also I have, we did add, so there is a portion of city general fund money for parks that goes to help fund parks for the city, goes into the Consolidated Parks Fund. We did increase that amount also.
Almost so that.
I, I can't remember right off what it was.
Okay. I'll send you an email.
We did, we did increase that.
Okay. It just goes to, again, saying what I've said in the past. Give parks funding that they need, they'll do the work. And so it's, especially with, I know trails, Commissioner Markley and I, we got, we got a, a good set of trails going for, for this. And our, yes, we were. But it shows that, again, you, we give the funding necessary to our Parks and Recreation to all of our departments. They'll do the work. These are projects that touch, I, from what I can see, touch every corner of our community. So it's. But but thank you, Angel. Thank you for all that you do, Public Works, for everything.
Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you. Angel, tell me the wall, there's a wall at the lake that has fallen.
That, that'll be, yes, correct. We will be talking about that in the needs section coming up.
Okay, okay. And then I just wanted to say, I left a meeting last night that had been held at Eisenhower Community Center, and it was a gorgeous day, so that was helpful. But I walked out of there. People on the track, people in the field, in the middle of the track, people at the spray park, people at the playground. There were people everywhere. It was absolutely delightful, and the place looked great. So you are to be commended. It's a wonderful investment to have that Eisenhower Rec Center, also people in the gym as we were leaving, you know, to have that joint investment with the school district. I wish we could do more of that, but you are to be commended because the, it was just vibrant there, and it was really nice to see that. Thank you.
I have a question, and maybe it's just for Reginald Lindsay, and it kind of piggybacks off what Commissioner Ramirez was asking. How many revenue streams are available that are utilized by parks that go into parks? I know you mentioned, I think, two, but are there any more?
So there is a special Parks and Rec Fund. Then there's a Consolidated Parks Fund. Then the City General Fund does pay into the Consolidated Parks Fund to help take care of city parks. Also, Community Development Block Grant also provides funding to the parks. And then Angel and her team have been doing, doing a great job of getting outside grants also.
But what's, what's that budget look like annually, this average, do you know?
So the Consolidated Parks Fund, I know it's about seven million dollars. I believe the Special Parks Fund is about six hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
So about seven point five million, what, give or take?
Yes.
The, I take it just based on past, um, conversations, the majority of your budget goes to personnel cost?
Yeah, a good, um, a, a good amount of it does go to, shoot, Angel probably has about 80, some, somewhere around 80 something employees or so, so, so a good amount. But there, there are quite a few infrastructure projects that go on there.
And these are great projects and, and I'm sure the sentiment with Commissioner, um, Bynum, um, that you all are doing great work. To prioritize these projects, how, how do we arrive at that? Is that something that, um, you decide? Um, how do we get to say, um, these are the projects that we're going to put money into these developments? Is there, and that's just for clarity for any of the public that may be watching.
Great question, Mayor. Um, so we definitely rely highly on the data that we have from the 2017 master plan. It's still a very real document. At the time that that was passed, you know, we just didn't receive, the department didn't receive the level of funding needed to implement what was asked for of the plan. So a lot of the information in there, um, is still what we utilize today to prioritize our needs. Um, what we look at first is if there's deferred maintenance needs that need addressing. You'll see that kind of in some of the needs section. Um, a lot of our requests are more or less deferred maintenance that we're just trying to get it addressed. I will say this year, we took, our department took a really intentional approach with including the park board, um, in this budget process and also working with the community. We had two months worth of budget workshops with the park board, just, you know, gathering their input and feedback and making sure that, you know, staff and park board were working together on that. So it's, it's a combination of everything.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner Townsend has her hand up.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everybody. I want to echo the compliments already extended, uh, to our Parks and Rec staff. And also, uh, appreciate the, the, uh, hard work and effort that Mr. Fisher and everybody who spoke. That's a real challenge for our streets, our bridges, um, they're doing, um, the best they can to raise our awareness of what we have to do with the budget. Um, I wanted to ask Ms. Ferrera about how Boston Daniels, what is expected to come of the, uh, hefty sum that's been allocated for this? What is that going to be targeted to do at Boston Daniels?
Yes, Commissioner Townsend. So currently we are working, uh, with Berio, our consultant on the project. And then also closely with Boston Daniels Corporation. And so, um, we've done a level of community engagement. Um, I will say that I think the desires that the community would like to see at the park, um, are definitely higher, um, than what we have to fund. So we'll have to make some decisions there. Um, some of the things that, uh, you'll, will, you'll see as we continue to bring that forward will be a redesign of the playground, probably including maybe some rubber surfacing. You'll see, um, some of the concrete work done there, the access to the parks improved. Uh, as far as sidewalks, you'll, you'll see beautification also proposed in that scope of work. You'll see, um, a monument, um, also, uh, just recognizing and, um, promoting the legacy of, uh, Mr. Boston Daniels as well. So there's a large menu of, um, items that the community has, you know, said they'd like to see. So we're working really closely right now to just, you know, get some additional feedback and then see, go from there and see what the priorities are for the community and, and see what we can afford through the budget. I know that, um, the Boston Daniels Corporation has done an excellent job on going out and getting additional funding and trying to bring in community partners. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to do a, a large chunk of that project. If we can kind of piece it together that way.
Okay, so the money, particularly that half million dollars, is that, uh, being set aside to actually affect some of these changes? Or is that kind of money designed for design work and that kind of thing?
Oh, it'll be for, uh, construction. So it'll be to, uh, implement some of these suggestions. And even, you know, repairing some of the rock work that needs to be addressed is also part of that, that consideration as well.
Yeah, that, uh, the infrastructure around that park, as you mentioned, the walls, uh, the sidewalks, those are going to be improvements that are going to pay off long-term. Uh, and as we've discussed before, when we're considering what other changes they might want to be made or, or nice to have things there, uh, have to be on guard about upkeep of whatever's posed in there. A lot of times people say they want X, Y, Z, but we have to be aware of any attendant ongoing costs that may be involved. Uh, one other thing that we desperately need to have done ASAP is, um, that step and rebar that is exposed to Parkwood Park on the stairs that lead from Quanderell down to the pool area. That really needs to be addressed as soon as possible in this budget or eke out some from 23. That, that's, uh, uh, a very bad situation. So thank you again for all that Public Works and Parks is doing. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd like to just shadow too, uh, with Commissioner Bynum. She's really, um, really glad that, uh, Boston Daniels Park is getting some needed attention. You know, he was the first, um, African-American chief in a, in a time when that was just unheard of. And, um, wasn't chief very long, um, but really was a trailblazing, uh, icon when you talk about, uh, as you go west of the Mississippi of Kansas City, Kansas really having an African-American chief. When that, you know, in, in an environment where that just didn't really exist during that era. So really glad that you're our take now. So the question is, is there anything significant to really, um, highlight? Chief Daniels, um, the value he posed to, to our community and maybe a little history. Are you working with that, that organization to maybe at the park itself? So, you know, 50 years from now, I can come and I can, who is Boston Daniels? And what did he represent to our community and, and to our nation, um, during that time?
Yeah, great question, Mayor. And I, earlier I said monument, I probably should have said statue. So there's definitely, um, plans, that's a high priority of, uh, the community group, Boston Daniels Corporation. So that will definitely be a part of that, uh, park project.
And then just an update, I was out at the lake, um, this past weekend, and I know that there was a retaining law, it looks like it just, uh, the fail. As a result, it looks like it's just maybe some deterioration from rain and just weather. Was, was that something that was going to be, because I think it's down to one lane. It, it, for me, it's narrow as that driving through the park is anyway. And, and then the hills and, and the limited sight visibility, um, I just, uh, was that something that was a priority as well?
Yes, Mayor, that will be coming up here in the next couple of slides when we, uh, get into the, the needs. I don't want to spoil that one. Okay, thanks.
Public Works, Fire CIP without, uh, I think there's some decisions to be made. So, uh, until tho- those decisions are made, what we're going to continue to do is just emphasize the importance of investments in street preservation and bridges. Uh, and then our contractual obligations to the Rock Island Bridge. Uh, and of course, Kansas Avenue is going to be a big, uh, a big, uh, priority over the next five years. I'll hand it back over to Angel.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Um, so again, just highlighting some of our needs, uh, so we'll, Wyandotte County Lake Rockwall, I know, uh, the mayor and Commissioner Bynum has mentioned this. Um, so this is, uh, you can see a little bit in this picture on the top right, doesn't quite do it justice. Um, but we did, um, ask for some initial funding last year in the amount of $200,000. After working, you know, with some contractors and getting a couple of bids, we just realized that, you know, we didn't quite account for just how probably big of a scope that this would be. Um, so now working with a few of our consultants, it's, you know, a lot bigger of a project. So we are coming back around, asking for, um, an additional $560,000 for this, to, to make this repair.
Question from Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. It, I mean, it has to be repaired.
Yes, yeah.
It's an historic lake. So is the repair being contemplated? A repair that, that keeps in line with the historic look of all those rock walls and wood beams and all that?
So I will say that this, this quote, or at least this estimate does not account for restoring it towards, you know, the Maceur New Work, but will be more of a concrete stamped stone. Um, happy to go back in and look at that. I will say after working with consultants, this is the most cost-effective approach. Well, happy to do that. I just think, you know, we're okay with seeing that drive up.
Will it hold the earth back?
Yeah, this, this solution will, um, because that's, the, the intent is, you know, for the repair to last for another, um, 50 years or so. Um, but it is, there is a significant, um, issue out there. It is clo- closed down to one lane. Um, so we are trying to address that as quickly as possible and, and the most effective way that we can. I, happy to show some pictures offline, if that helps, on what it could look like. Um, not, not horrible, of course. It's not going to be the original stone setback. We are very intentional, even with the shelter repairs, as you'll see down here. Um, when we do those repairs to the shelters, we do try to restore it back to its normal look. We just, um, updated the Marina restroom, kept that in mind and also restored it back to more of its natural looking state. Um, it is just a little, little bit more costly to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. Angel, the, I would assume that that hill would need to be scarfed back in order to allow, uh, the turn to be softened, but also to allow for a wing wall to be built that would support the concrete wall that you, you all are proposing. And there's, as you stated, stamped concrete or even a facade, an artificial facade to be put on the front later on. Uh, but we do need to stabilize that wall. I would hope that it softens that curve there a little more. It might be necessary to even go back a little further, give a little bit more of a shoulder there on that turn.
It's been a tight corner for mid decade.
No, and I, I'd have to go back and look, I haven't gotten the, the official scope. I've just been talking preliminary. I wanted to, you know, come to this meeting with more hard numbers, just to have a more accurate, you know, picture of what we're looking like. But we can, you know, make sure we consider that too. I know that that'll be a piece. We've talked a little bit about just how much dirt work needs to be done here, removing of the dirt and also a lot of the trees that, that have kind of grown over the top, so.
I think, uh, if I'm hearing the commissioner right, I don't know how much more would be, but while you're in the, the phase of getting estimates, um, administrator, if you could, um, just maybe have staff work with Commissioner Bynum and the, the district commissioner and allow them the opportunity to see, um, what the costs and the schematics and, and kind of weigh in, um, as you all make that final decision. Um, I think that would be appropriate to allow the commission, um, to have some type of input, because, um, sure. And I know what I'm picking up is that Commissioner Bynum would like as much as we can to, to maintain the, um, historic nature of the park.
Sure, yes. Um, so our, uh, next need, uh, which is also a priority. So we'd be, we are most likely requesting 175,000, um, for electric heating at Wyandotte County Lake facilities. What this means is, um, Atmos has basically told us our infrastructure is failing out there as far as gas pipes. We actually already have some that have been shut down, decommissioned. So we spent last winter, you know, using propane to heat the shop. And so we are anticipating more of this, you know, down the road. So we've worked really closely with John Kelly and his team, um, to get an assessment on what needs to be done to at least address the west shop, uh, the west office, and then also the marina, converting to electric. Next on the list, again, that annual shelter repair, uh, maintenance. So that was one of our highlights and also again, one of our priorities, um, with the number of shelters that we have in our system, which is roughly about 50. And, uh, you know, we know that they're rented often and does generate some of that revenue for our department. We want to make sure that we're upkeeping the maintenance on those. Also, um, a high priority need would just be the continued program of replacing our playground equipment. Um, you know, we've, we're starting to get through a lot of these and getting some updated structures. We've done a good job at, you know, working with Kaboom and utilizing grant fund to do some of those in, um, some of our parks. But also, um, some of our equipment, if you've been out to Wyandotte County Lake or even Wyandotte County Park, is that old metal equipment. So we are trying to take an intentional approach on addressing those issues and, you know, removing some of that for safety concerns. And also just again, being intentional about where we're putting equipment back and what that looks like. And then lastly on the needs is the neighborhood park improvements. So requesting, um, this amount of funding again, uh, just to be able to continue to do needed maintenance on our park amenities as it relates to, relates to sport courts. The funding that we, um, did receive this year will be going to, uh, renovate a few of our tennis courts in the city. So that wraps it up for our needs.
Commissioner, uh, Burrows.
Angel, the entrance to Wyandotte County Lake has a, uh, I'll call it a guard shack that sits there. The entrance to Wyandotte County Lake is, is very rustic, to say the very least. And it leads, leads into a, a memorial, a veterans memorial that needs some, um, tender loving care. But is there anything within the budget to enhance the entrance to the lake? To make it more inviting and welcoming, uh, in, uh, as, as we go forward?
Uh, Commissioner Burrows, I know we had previously been trying to restore that guard shack. And so we've done, um, some improvements on the inside. I just don't think we've gotten into a place to where it could be open again as maybe like an info booth, but I can certainly check into that. Um, as far as funds currently identified, we don't have any, any projects slated, but it's something we can certainly consider and see where that could fit in.
Is, I guess, would it be necessary that we keep that rustic charm? Or would it be necessary to put a functional facility there that would allow security and/or any? I know when I was a young man, they used to do road license checks there for, for license plates and run your, uh, tag number and everything as you came through. Yeah, just, just mine, just mine. All the cars I had, they probably wondered which one I was driving. Uh, but, uh, the, just the entrance to the lake, it's, it's not as welcoming as, as it could be. Um, I'd like to s- you know, I think many of us in the community would like to see a, a nicer entrance to our lake besides you just a sign that sets, sets out there and a sh- shack that's kind of, looks like it's a little cattywampus. And the windows are all smoked over and, um, it just kind of sends a wrong message. But I, I would hope that we could look into something like that for our part.
Yeah, I'll ma- make note of that and see, see what that could look like.
Thank you, Angel.
So, uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to get a sense, Angel, on how much, uh, the Parks Department has received in terms of grants, either for this current year or the years that are coming.
Um, so would you like to know included like the CARES Act dollars and the ARPA dollars that we've received? No? No? Okay, um, so I would say your question was Commissioner Johnson and this year and years to come?
Yes. Um. Anthropic dollars.
Sure. Um, so would that include, would you, could I include in CARES? No, I know. But any of like the airmark funding that we're receiving through Representative Sharice Davis Fund?
No.
I would say probably, just guessing off the top of my head, probably 2.5 million? Or at least 2 million, well over the next two years.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, appreciate that.
Commissioner Stikes.
Hey, what is the, uh, purpose of the guard check? If we're not using that anymore, and I know that you said that we've done some inside, um, um, maintenance and upkeep. If we're not using it, I'm just wondering what, why do we, why do we put any dollars into it if we're not using it?
Yeah, so we, um, the intent behind that was to do the improvement so we could reopen it to the public as kind of an information booth, kiosk, and have some historic memorabilia of the lake in there. Um, and so we tried to get it to a place to where, you know, we could do so. We hadn't quite finished the repairs. We had it open for one day and I believe a window was busted open. So we're just trying to rethink what that could look like.
Well, and I think that that would be the problem is it's secluded, it's by itself. You know, we've had the, at the memorial, right? How many times have we had the, uh, statue stolen from there, right? Um, many. And, and I would think, um, that, that maybe that the location that we have, once you go in the park and to the left where the Sheriff's Department and the other things that are going on there. And I think that, is that where the noxious weed? department is at?
Noxious weed office is yes, right around the corner from the Parks Main Office.
Mm-hmm. That um that maybe that would be, um, it's more visible. Maybe that's the location for uh, you know, information, that type of thing. And then maybe those uh, that building doesn't need to be maintained and it can go towards um kind of, I guess, beautifying that entrance. I think a lot of folks, whenever they turn down Ninety First Street, they know they're heading to the lake, right? So it's not like they're driving down the road and then they're all of a sudden deciding, you know what, there's a nice entrance, we'll go to the lake, right? They already know they're going there. But I do agree that uh there could be some more and little bit more at the entrance. Speaking on the uh about the noxious weed, and this may be getting a little bit off topic, but uh I had somebody reach out to me just this last week. And can you, where where is the funding uh out of the the cells of uh our chemical cells? Where does that go into? Is that a that go into general or just kind of give me a little information on the whole, the how the whole noxious weed department works?
It goes back into the Consolidated Parks Fund?
Mm-hmm. Well, so how, what? Tell me the process of somebody, a Wyandotte County resident, what happens? How do they go about utilizing noxious weed department?
So we sell chemicals um just a few times a year, and it's housed right there at the noxious weed office, so they would basically go to the office. I think there's some paperwork and ID, you know, verification that would need to be shown, purchase the the sprays and the applicators, and then that that's pretty much the process.
Do you know what the cost of the chemical is off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head. Um, I I know it increased a little bit from last year, but I I could follow up with you on that.
I think it's about three times the cost for the exact same product that Leavenworth County charges for the exact same product. I had a, I had a constituent reach out to me and they were able to go to Leavenworth County and buy the exact same product, exact same container as a non-resident of Leavenworth County for um a third of the cost. They couldn't even go to Wyandotte County, where the county that they live and pay high taxes in and and buy uh chemicals at a uh a reasonable cost. Um, so I don't know if we might need to look into uh where we're getting uh that supply from or why the margins are so high. Um, it seems like that ought to be a cost that uh there's there's no markup on at all, if we can pass that on to our uh Wyandotte County residents. Thanks.
Angel, Mayor had to leave the room, but he has a couple of questions that he'd like you to address. One item is a question and a suggestion, I guess, combined, because the entrance sign to the lake, he feels like is somewhat weathered and maybe could be a simple upgrade that kind of helps with this welcoming effort of entry into the lake. And then he wanted to just jump over to, and you may be getting to these, I don't know, but he wanted to jump over to Big Eleven and Cop Point for like what kinds of improvements might be planned there and also the issue at Big Eleven with the um algae. And is that actually something that's ongoing with the EPA or is there an EPA remedy available for that issue at Big Eleven? Those were kind of the questions he wanted me to pose.
Sure. Um, so let me try to tackle Cop Point Park first. Um, so we are currently uh working to replace, repair one of the boat ramps there. We've been working on it for a while. That project is, you just didn't see it up here. I was only given so many to put up here, but um uh that project is slated to take place in August. It's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar repair and investment to Cop Point Park. Um, so we did also last year address the building that was there. I think you might remember some vandalism, car slammed into it. That was in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. We did have to wait a couple of years on that repair for lumber to come down, and we were able to do it at what we thought was a good, good price. Um, I think that some items that our staff is working towards trying to address is uh we know that the lighting along the boardwalk is out and that's due to copper theft, so we are kind of working to determine, you know, what could that look like? I know I've spoke with uh Mr. Fisher and his team about, you know, what what could solar look like and maybe even seeing what opportunities are there for some grant funding. Um, so I, that's probably what we've got slated for Cop Point Park as far as repairs. We do receive annual ten thousand dollars just for any, you know, maintenance issues that might arise, so. And
Go ahead.
And then Big Eleven Lake. Um, so we, every year, see an issue with the blue-green algae. So this year, uh, we are working with KDHE. They came to us and wanted to pilot this peroxide treatment program and just to see if it could kind of help address some of the issues we have there. So we do work really closely with KDHE to monitor that situation. I know that I'm also working with um Mr. Fisher's team and uh Sarah Schaefer and Stormwater and also trying to see, you know, how can we address some of the issues there, just with the water quality.
Thank you.
Right.
During this part of the presentation, interim CFO Debbie Johnson and myself, we're going to talk about how CIP is funded across the organization. So first slide we're going to look at here is uh Kansas City, Kansas, and the mill rates within Kansas City, Kansas. And the reason we're looking at this is because we have two mill rates for the uh City of Kansas City, Kansas. One is the City General Fund and one is the City Bond and Interest Fund. And between these two funds, this is where most of our capital projects are funded from. So wanted to just talk about the um percentage of the mills and where they go. So forty-four percent of the mills actually go to the City Bond and Interest Fund. And this is where uh a bulk of our projects are paid from. So just wanted to update the public on that. And then the City General Fund is fifty-seven percent of that. And on the county side, the County General Fund does fund a a good portion of the projects over there. And then we also have the County Bond and Interest Fund that funds a good amount of the projects. Uh, so we can see that the County General Fund funds uh seventy-eight percent of the budget over there. And then on the uh County Bond and Interest Fund funds six percent of the budget just just for uh out of total mill levy budget. And so the County Bond and Interest is six percent. And so we compare that to a city uh side of the house where we have forty-four percent of of our mills going towards debt on the county side. We're more in line like where we should be, where uh six percent is going to County Bond and Interest, but also the contrast on the city side, we do have to take care of more streets and there are a lot more street miles and a lot of more infrastructure that we have to take care of over there. Uh, so that is something that does not happen on the County Bond and Interest Fund, and as I said, it's not mandatory.
Reggie, we have a question from Commissioner Stikes.
Yeah, Reggie, on the uh, what does that four point four um equate to in dollars on the consolidated parks that's paid out of the county?
That's about seven hundred, I mean, seven million dollars.
Comes out of the county side, seven million, right?
That is the, that is the mill levy for it. So that, that uh, so Parks and Rec's budget is is about seven million dollars and four point four million of it comes from uh the City General Fund, and then the other portion would come from the Consolidated Parks. So um I guess we're talking, talking about three million dollars there that comes from 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 the county portion.
Gotcha, three. So how many county facilities, how many parks are there that uh are are uh addressed?
I believe there's three. Is it three county parks, Angel? Yes.
Correct.
And what are those?
Wyandotte County Park, Wyandotte County Lake Park, and Pearson Park.
Roughly about a million dollars a year to maintain each of those parks out of the county side. Does that, that be accurate?
And I I can't say, is there other things that may be um funded county-side wise? There could be, and I just.
I'd have to I can follow up with some more information on that.
Okay, all right. That's all I have now. Thank you.
So current slide, what we we're reviewing is the uh CIP, this overview of total breakdown across um across the unified government. So we can see uh in twenty twenty-three, we have ninety-three million dollars uh for CIP. Out of that, uh certified funds, which are cash-paid projects are thirty-two million dollars, and then we have debt, which is about sixty million dollars. So we, as we break those down, we see the certified budget breakdown by capital and fund type. As a percentage of like total budget in a consolidated general fund, capital is about three and a half percent of the total budget, while ninety-six percent of of the budget goes towards like operating and personnel. Uh, other tax levies, we're almost at two percent uh that funds capital, uh special revenue funds. We do have like thirty percent of the expenditures there that are are funded by special revenues for capital. Uh, when we get into enterprise funds, fifteen percent of enterprise funds budget does go towards capital and then our fiduciary and trust agencies, which is basically our bond and interest fund is a cost both the city and the county uh pay for eighty-one percent of capital coming from those funds. And then also uh chart at the bottom, a certified capital breakdown by equipment and projects. So part of our capital plan also includes equipment. Uh, and mostly today, we're talking about projects, but we can see we're looking at consolidated general fund, equipment is uh forty-seven percent of of the capital budget and project, capital projects are fifty-two percent of that. Then as we get into other tax levy funds, uh forty-one percent is equipment and fifty-eight percent is projects. And then it's special revenue funds, around thirty-two percent of it goes toward equipment. Almost seventy percent goes towards projects and then in enterprise funds, twenty-five percent goes towards equipment and seventy-five percent goes towards projects. And then as we get into our uh fiduciary funds, which are our city bond and interest fund on both the city and the county side, we do not fund equipment out of those. So most of those, all all that funding goes towards projects. Current slide is a a view of um capital projects uh by fund. Basically, what we have is um just going out five years, looking at projects and how they're funded. Uh, so we can see the consolidated general fund. We also have um other tax levy funds, which at this current in this current schedule, the only other tax levy fund that has some capital was the Health Department. Then we also have like agency funds, which include like special revenue funds which include community development, tourism, and convention, and also the dedicated sales tax. Also, uh, ARPA money was was was, that's where it was. And then we have our enterprise fund, which are our funds that uh fund themselves, where we have funding of eleven million dollars for capital projects in twenty twenty-two is what we had. Then we have our capital projects fund. And we see in twenty twenty-three, uh, total there was like eighty-two million dollars that we'll be funding this year. Current slide is a breakout of looking at the capital by a functional area. This provides a view to show where capital is being spent across the organization as far as departments. So we can see in twenty twenty-three, um, we did, we were planning to spend eighty-two million dollars on capital. And here is a view of a breakout for twenty twenty-three, uh, the eighty-two million dollars, how it looks at uh as far as was spent by fund. And we can see our capital projects fund, that's where a majority of the funding goes out of or goes to to fund capital projects, and that includes our bond and interest funds. Then we also have our enterprise funds, which are seventeen percent of the total. And then we also have a consolidated general fund, which is about six percent of what's funded by capital. And the other pie chart uh breaks down the functional areas that are funded for twenty twenty-three and the eighty-two million dollars. We see Public Works, eighty-one percent of the funding goes to Public Works, and that's because they're having most of the projects that are related like streets, structure across the city. And we have public safety, fourteen percent.
Red, Reggie.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Can you tell me why the amounts, I know there's a reason to tell us this issue every year, but why the amounts go down for CIP over the respective years after twenty twenty uh three? We go from eighty-two to seventy-six to sixty to and then it jumps back up to eighty. Then it goes back down to fifty-eight. And I mean, I could look at the actual numbers and say, well, this is but I don't understand the dynamics of the assumptions.
Well, this particular budget that we're looking at here, this is how the budget budget was built uh for the twenty twenty-three budget that we approved last year. So uh when we built the funding out, uh, those were our needs at that point in time. Now, when we bring the budget back to you, uh, the proposed budget back to you on August tenth, those numbers are are going to be different because they will have more needs because our needs have changed since then. That that is one of the reasons why you see that type of change. Current slide, what we're looking at is a twenty twenty-three uh CIP cash projects summary. And basically, um what we're illustrating here is cash projects. And our cash projects are twenty-two million dollars, and they're about twenty-seven percent of that total eighty-two million dollars that I spoke about. And we see a majority of the um cash is spent from enterprise funds. Then some are special revenue funds, uh, they come in a close second, and then our consolidated general funds uh do pay uh a good amount of capital from those. And the other chart to the side shows um five-year plan and how capital is spent uh for cash across across those five years. Current slide is a view of a twenty twenty-three CMIP debt projects. Um, and basically what we're doing is giving a summary of projects as it as they break down by debt and enterprise fund. So we can see uh city debt projects for twenty twenty-three were nineteen and a half million dollars. As we go into our public building commission, we had two point four million dollars projects for twenty twenty-three. In our sewer system, we had projects of twenty-one million dollars. And within our state revolving loan fund, we had four point eight million dollars. Uh, Stormwater Utility of two hundred thousand dollars. And this particular slide kind of uh drills down into our debt projects for the city. And we see in twenty twenty-three, uh, we have nineteen and a half million dollars uh that we we have planned to spend this year. And so one of the things here, like in the past, um, we have issued like eighteen million to uh twenty million dollars worth of debt. Uh, so one of the things that we're looking here to do is cut this back somehow and and not issue the nineteen to twenty million dollars worth of debt each year. We'd like to move things that are related to maintenance, uh, that we have been deadening over to cash uh so that we can free more more funding up to allow Public Works to move faster on projects in the future and and just not pay for maintenance and lock lock our maintenance uh tossed up in debt so that we can pay for more operating things out of our, out of our budget and reduce the forty-four percent that we're spending on debt on the city general side. Current slide is a view of uh the debt projects that we did just look at on the prior page, and literally what we're doing is have a view of um pie chart to show uh streets is fifty-three percent of that cost. Uh, then we also have facilities that are thirty-eight percent of that cost. And then the next uh chart, what it does is give a breakout. And then the next chart, what it does is give a breakout of different projects across a five-year span. You see the top line, which is facilities does spike up in 2026, and that's related to some facilities that we have planned to build. We see streets in blue is a pretty steady number. And then we do have the orange, orange spike that's related to bridges that we're planning out in the future. Now I'm going to turn it over to our interim CFO, Debbie Johncher. She's going to talk more about debt.
Good evening, Debbie Johncher, interim CFO. So yeah, just wanted to start out, give you some information on the next couple of slides over what goes into, what funds the, go into the bond and interest funds and what it's paying for. So I just wanted to start out here with this slide, maybe some points that we pulled out from our debt policy and, and just kind of review it as we discussed, you know, funding the capital. So this is not the entire policy, but this is, this, these are some points that we're kind of using as a guide when we look at options to consider. One of the points in our policy is debt financing serves as a tool to finance large capital investments that cannot be funded as pay as you go. One of the things we want to look at is what, our policy doesn't really define what is a large capital investment. So we have, we're debt financing things as, you know, as small as 100,000, all the way up to several million dollars. So we definitely want to look at, you know, in addition to, you know, some of that could have been maintenance. But we definitely want to look at what is, you know, what really should we be financing with debt? And what should, what should be, we be paying for with cash? Another point we have in our policy is that annual debt service payments excluding, excluding enterprise funds are targeted at 10 to 12% of total budget authority of the tax levied funds. For 2023, we are actually a little bit above that target. And, but you know, we're, so I think that's one of the things we need to look at is getting, getting our annual debt service payments back into that target area. And I'll have some more information on what our payments are here on the next couple of slides. Says that we will follow Kansas statute setting the financial debt limitations. The amount of outstanding debt cannot exceed 30% of the county's assessed valuation. We are in compliance with this policy. Currently, the debt limit that we've spent is about 51%. This number goes up as the assessed value continues to go up. So we have, we're not anywhere near our, you know, being restricted by our debt limit. However, we, we feel like we still need to review, you know, what we're funding with debt. You know, given our, given our current situation and, and what should be funded with debt versus cash.
We have a question, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Debbie and I, I don't have still this debt service fund page next, but I was just wondering, do we have any type of debt service coverage that we are obligated to meet either by policy or by ordinance?
No, I don't think with the general obligation, I, I'll have to look and see. I don't think we have any restrictions. I know when we used to issue the sewer debt as revenue, sewer revenue bonds, there were covenants on those that required, I believe it was like maybe 1.2 or 1.3 coverage with the, with the general obligation backing. We don't have those restrictions.
It's not defined in our policy either?
No.
Or is there anything that kind of serves as a guardrail, guardrail for us as a barrier so that we don't drop below one to one?
No, I, well, I think, no, I think that one of the things that we look at, you know, we, obviously we've talked before about what can our mill levy, what the current mill that we have set, how much can we afford in issuing new debt? And that's kind of where we came up with that target. And that's actually moving right into my next point there is that, you know, in the past, we, at one point we were at 15 million based on, you know, what we thought the mill levy, based on the valuation, how much we were collecting off the mill levy. And as the assessed valuation has grown, even though we haven't changed the mill levy to the debt service fund in, in many years, we've collected more revenue due to that growth on the assessed value. And that's what's allowed us to issue more than the 15 million. We're up closer to the 18 to 20 million now. So.
In itself serves as that kind of.
Right.
Push in there.
Right.
Got it.
And then the, the, yeah, and that was kind of my point was that the, the mill levy is, and I'll have a, I'll have a kind of a reconciliation on what, what we get in the fund and what that pays for. To kind of show you that that is covering, it is covering the, the general obligation debt. And then the last point is just general obligation backing should be used for essential government services or projects with an asset life of greater, of five years or greater. And we do keep that in mind when we look at what, what projects we're funding with debt.
I have a question, Debbie. Or maybe you and Reggie. I know before I became mayor, and then when I became mayor, I know the, we had some residual that wasn't anticipated as far as revenues from a variety of sources. Is that something that's been consistent or is that just kind of a something that's unusual? And, and what are all those amounts? And then, and then on the tail end of that, what did we do with that residual unanticipated increases in revenue streams that, that came in from a variety of sources? Or did you just go in general fund or were those applied to something specific debt? Or what did that look like?
Or are you talking about just the, the, the increased revenue from valuation increases that goes in or?
No, I, I know that last year I'd meant, you had mentioned it, or Ms. Donahue, and I know the year before I became mayor, it was mentioned that what you budgeted for, and then what was actually brought in from all the, the different sources allowed for a small increase in revenues that weren't anticipated, just kind of carryover. I don't know what those amount, I can't remember what those amounts were. But on the tail end of that, I was just wondering where those funds went or what, what were they applied to?
If, if we bring in additional, say, for instance, in the general fund, we budget property tax revenue and we collect more than we budget, it falls to the fund balance. So then that would be the reserve that carries over to the next year. You know, say, for instance, I think with like the general fund, we did, we did take in more sales tax revenue than we budgeted. But if we don't have additional budget authority on the expense side, you can't spend that. You have to have the budget authority in order to be able to expend the additional revenue that you take in. So if you don't have that authority, then it just falls to the fund balance. And it's carried over into the next year and you can allocate it in the budget the following year.
Okay, so, thank you.
And the, the money that goes into all the individual funds, whether it's general fund, the special revenues, enterprise, that money stays within that fund. So then it just falls to the fund balance.
Do we, do we know what, what that has been? The additional revenues from the self taxes that, that were brought in? Would, would that look like that amount? And then are we projecting that as well going into this budget year?
I don't have that exact amount. I know, I think the sales tax revenue from last year was maybe several million, maybe three to four million, something like that. So, and so that would be, that would be in our general fund estimate that we presented, I think in a previous meeting, previous budget workshop. We would have had that built into the fund balance that carried over into the next year.
Commissioner Biden.
So I'm just so, part of what we follow here is Kansas statute that says our debt cannot be more than 30% of our total county valuation. We just looked it up. When Matt, we think we looked it up when Matt Willard brought his annual report to us a couple of months ago, the county valuation is at 15 billion. And 30% of that would be 4.5 billion. And that's a.
I think maybe you might be looking at the, are you looking at the estimated actual valuation?
Yeah. Are you referencing?
We're, we're referencing the assessed valuation, right?
What is that?
You don't have the adjusted, all he gave us was the total. So we don't have the adjusted.
What? What would the adjusted be between adjusted for what? Delinquencies and exemptions?
Well, yeah, I think it's the, this is the.
The assessed value.
Which I have the, because every year when we do a bond issue, we update our official statement and that calculation is part. We have to present that calculation. I believe our total assessed value that's available will seem like it was like 550 million or something like that.
Total assessed value.
Oh no, I'm sorry. That's the, that's after, let me look before.
I'm sorry.
Start talking. Our, so our total assessed equalized, equalized assessed tangible valuation is 1.8 billion.
Okay.
And then you take 30% of that brings us to about 560 million, 560.
More sense. And the part of the reason I'm asking, Mr. Administrator is two things. When we talk here about the policy page that we're looking at, I do not know, I cannot remember if these are policies that were, for example, brought to economic development and finance, approved and then moved forward. Are they policies we voted on to adopt or are they policies set within the department or maybe a combination of both?
And these are, this would be a policy that was brought in 2018, we brought a lot of, we updated a lot of our policies and brought those not only to the EDF, but then they were forwarded on to the commission for approval.
I knew you had done a lot of work in that arena. So, so these are adopted commission policies.
Yes.
And I, I think at some point at a future conversation, I would like to talk about, talk more about the debt and get a real handle on how much is it, where is it, you know, how does it fall off? Like certain portions of it. I would just like a little bit deeper dive on debt. So I'll leave it at that for now. I'm sorry, could you clarify again? So total assessed value 1.8 billion and you said that 30% was around?
500, just under 560 million.
Five, six, zero million.
At 30%. Thank you. That's it. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a suggestion to our CFO, Budget Director and to our Administrator. Cause I know that Commissioner Biden touched on it, that these, you know, these policies go through EDNF and then eventually to the full commission. But a suggestion I'd like is have a policy one-on-one lesson on all our, on all of our financial policies. I know we can go online and read them, but I think for us as a governing body, it'd be good for us to review them and to know what's in them. I know when we go through budget, we hear about all the policies, but I think it'd be a good idea if we go through and read and digest all of our financial policies. I think that'd be very beneficial for us moving forward. And I, I, I'm sure other commissioners and colleagues would agree. It'd be just very beneficial for us so that we know what's in, we're talking about the fund balance policy. We know what exactly is in there and everything. So I just thought it'd be a good, good suggestion.
So this next slide, we're just kind of broke down the city and county mill, mill levy and what's collected. So on the city side, we have 17.048 mills. As Reggie pointed out earlier, it's 44% of the city mill levy. The property tax revenue that's brought in is about 23.8 million. And that is net of the delinquency percentage. For the 2023 budget, we did have a 7% budget, a 7% delinquency built in there. So that 23 is net of that. We are looking at that to review because I think when we went, when we collect, went through the fourth quarter annual report, we collected about 101, 102% of the property tax revenue that was budgeted. So we, that we are looking to reduce that percentage going into, for this next budget year. And then on the, pardon me.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Was that the delinquency rate you said?
That was a delinquency rate, yes. For 2023, it was, we were at 7%. So on the county side, the mill levy is 2.220 mills, 5.9% of the county mill levy. And the property tax revenue that's generated from that is about 3.5 million. And then I just kind of listed out the different things that we can fund with, when we do debt financing, which would include all of our infrastructure as well as equipment and software. So this next slide is where I, where I kind of pulled out, and this is for 2023. This is, this goes into information that I mentioned that we update in our official statement. We have to update all of our outstanding debt each year. And so I kind of pulled some of this information together. What I have done is excluded all the enterprise fund debt activity because the enterprise funds do pay for their debt. So even though it's paid for out of the debt service fund, there is, the enterprise funds do pay for that debt. So I've taken them out. So on the top here, the first one I have is the city of Kansas City, Kansas. And I've listed out the general obligation bonds. We have a small PVC bond on the city side as well as the temp notes that were issued for 2023. So our total is 298 million in debt on the city side. The annual debt service payments are 30.2 million. And you'll notice that there's no annual payment on the temp notes. And that's because we issue a one-year temp note, we pay that off. And we either issue another temp note or we issue a permanent bond. When we issue the permanent bond, that's when the debt service hits the debt service fund, when that permanent bond is issued. So over on to the right, I've now showing the revenue that's collected. So based on the mill levy, the current revenue that's collected is the 23.8 million. We also receive other tax revenue into that fund. We have a delinquent tax that's collected. We have motor vehicle tax that's collected and other sales tax revenue that's related to the economic development projects that we have debt funded. So total on the city side, we're collecting 30.5 million. And none of this revenue is associated with enterprise fund debt. This is all to go toward general, the general fund debt. So it is covering, the current mill levy is covering the debt service payments that we currently have. However, if there were any adjustment to the mill or increases in debt, you know, that, all of that goes in and can affect that, that amount each year. On the county side, we have the same, same information. The total outstanding debt for the county is 60.1 million. The annual debt service payments are 5.4 million. We're collecting mill levy revenue of 3.5 and then the other tax revenue about 700,000. And then I did want to note in the other revenue, you'll see 1.5 million. The 1.5 million is a transfer from the general fund that goes to pay for the juvenile center facility debt. When we, when we built that facility, the idea was that we would save, we would have savings from farm outs, moving the juveniles to the other building. And so it was decided that we would do a transfer of general fund revenues or general fund savings over to the debt service rather than adjusting the mill levy. So that's, so as you can see, there's 5.4 million in debt and 5.7 million in revenue. So there is a little bit, for both funds, it's about 300,000 more than what we're, revenue coming in than what we're paying out.
Question, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, I think I'm following along, but just making sure. So the 30.5 and the 5.7 are what is allocated to the debt service fund, correct?
That's correct. That's revenue coming into those funds.
Thank you.
And so then these next two slides are, are slides that we showed in the, in a previous budget workshop, the estimates for the city bond and interest fund. And just, just to kind of show where we are. So you can see in 2023 amended, we're projecting about a $10 million fund balance. As you can see, the revenues, revenues and expenses are, you know, pretty close. We have about a net change of about 28, 28,000 to the fund balance. So, and then that, that balance continues to grow based on our estimates that we have moving forward. Any adjustments that we would make in the mill levy or any amount of debt we're issuing could all, could affect all of those adjustments for future years. And then same thing on the county. Our current estimated fund balance at the end of 2023 is 2.1, just under 2.2 million. Growing all the way to 5.3 million out in 2028. And so I'll just end, and we put a quote in here from Albert Einstein, that we cannot solve our problems with the same level of thinking that created them. And that's where we're actually trying to think of ways where we can, we can change the situation we're in. And looking at what we should be financing, what we need to be paying with cash. Um, and looking at, um, what we should be financing, what we need to be paying with cash and how we, how we correct that deficit. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, County Administrator, Mr. Johnson, to, um, talk about our last slide.
I've got a quick question. Um, I believe BPU may have, um, raised their rates. Um, how does that affect the pilot that we get from BPU? Well, if they raised their rates, I believe it was 60% or so. How does that affect the revenues projected coming in on our pilot, uh, that we collect from?
I know if, if they, if they increase their rates, um, with, with you should, you should, usage staying the same. Um, we would, we would see an increase to the pilot off that. I don't, I don't know if they've approved that yet. I know they were talking about it. They were, I think their board was reviewing an increase. Um, but yes, that would, that could affect the pilot.
Yes, the hearing portion has ended. It will go to the board July 5th is the anticipated date for them to make a decision. And I think that I don't have the exact amount, but that would be split over two years implementation and in waters a little bit different.
I, I guess the question is, is would any rates increase from BPU affect the unified governance pilot?
Yes, it would. It would increase, increase the amount of revenue we receive.
So as we talked in a previous budget session that, um, our city side of the budget, um, has significant challenges that we gotta face. Um, but also as we were looking at our, our, our budget as a whole, I'm alarmed how we rely so much on debt to get things done around here. And when I looked at one proposed, um, capital improvement schedule, it was an anticipated huge increase in the future of debt. And that means the property tax bill will go up to pay that debt. And I don't think that was in the spirit of the discussion that I heard from the commission on, uh, the last two months when it comes to, uh, to that. So, uh, we charged all the departments in looking at, that are funded by the city's general fund to take a hard look at where they can contribute savings. One, to erase the $10 million anticipated deficit next year that will allow us to, uh, take the next year or two, to really take a look at how we do business. Should we be in, providing certain services and all that as we continue to, uh, um, I think get our fiscal house in order. Um, so when I saw this reliance on increasing and some of it sizable, um, to do the work that has been talked with this council and previous councils or commissions. Um, it's alarming to me, particularly when 44% of the mills that you collect on the county side goes to debt. That restricts how much we can, uh, adjust the other side to provide the services that our public relies on. Now, we're going to capital projects, which they rely on that too. But we also have other departments that provide vital services to our public. And so anytime we start looking at, um, increasing the amount of debt, it's further constricting the amount available for us to provide the other responsibilities of our government. So that what's prompted us to add maybe a larger presentation of debt um, in, in a, in a CIP discussion than you've had in the past. So the departments have, uh, taken a look at what type of options could we throw on the table for discussions. And one is, um, we, we issue no debt for three years and do nothing. Problem with that is those projects that you're going to fund don't go away. You deliver and three years later, they're going to be more expensive to do. And therefore, but you know, you have to look at all options. So that's there. Um, start looking at ways to reduce the amount of debt financing starting in 2024. Maybe shift the mills from the bond and interest fund to the general fund. And what that is, if you saw the, the $10 million, um, uh, balance, uh, in the, in the, uh, city and bond interest fund is to move that over, some of that over to the city. Uh, to help out the structural deficit. Problem is you can do that once. So you see how this is going. At least we're identifying options. Um, then, um, really take a hard look at what capital improvements should be debt financed. Um, we do have a, a, a challenge. Uh, every other community I managed, when we got the state rev, uh, state, uh, gas tax revenue, that was our maintenance fund for streets. Repavement program came out of that, certain small equipment came out of that. Um, you, you would do some other small projects. As, as Debbie said, we're now uh, financing 100,000, $300,000, uh, capital improvements each year. Those are considered small. Um, but we're financed using debt to do that. When I looked at working with the team at, uh, the, the, the road fund, I call it, that's my background. Um, is that we actually fund people out of that. And to me, that's an operation cost that should actually be in the general fund. But this is how you talk about it's tough to deal with. Because we've taken the capacity of that fund to fund those small projects or the repaving projects. Um, we're issuing debt. If we move those people funded into the general fund and frees up projects paid for out of cash, well, then our mill rate has to go up on the general fund to pay for those people. So somewhere in the history of unified government, there was a decision, I, I'm thinking that to keep the mill rates from going up, it's legal to do that. So let's do that. But you lose the capacity and you're using debt. And that means we're paying more than we would with cash as we're paying interest. So that's, and, and we do that with, I know the EMS fund as well. That should be an equipment purchase fund, but how it was marketed, it was to cover all costs of EMS. But we have like 24 firefighters in there and it still doesn't cover the cost. We subsidize it from the general fund. So there, there are some interesting things that have gone on over the years that, um, we would like over the next few years, neaten up, tighten up, get more common sense into it, um, and all that. Um, and then reserve balance, I think that's the short-term notes. Is that the one I mentioned, use the 10 million? To deal with that to, you pay off your short-term debts earlier than later. So these are just four ideas that have come from staff that we're mulling. You know, we take consideration and we'll, 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 we'll outline what ideas that came from staff when I present my budget. Um, but we have a complicated situation here. And I guess for lack of a better term, I'll use that word complicated. Um, because in a previous slide, I, I, it said that we have $72 million that we have to allocate to the bridge project. It's not in this. We're going to finance it through debt. But it's not in there yet. The other one is, um, you said you wanted to increase your infrastructure funding 25% each year over the next year. It's a compounding effect. And, uh, that's when I said at a previous meeting, ain't going to happen. I, 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 I don't, we have to take a hard look at how we use debt. And I can't make promises today um, on that. The other issue is what Jeff and his team articulated, we got challenges out there. We got, we're not going to ignore that. But how we can pay for all you want to do is next to impossible. And we have to be careful what we promise. Because can't increase the debt and also increase commitments from the general fund to other programs and all that. So you can see how this is a fascinating, complicated balancing act. And so tonight, I think what you're used to is that in, in the past, you'd have a CIP and this is what's going in the budget. I can't tell you this is going in the budget. Until we take a hard look at the whole umbrella of services. The other thing is, um, in my budget presentation, I'll tell you one thing I'm going to commit to. And that is, we are going, we are the unified government. But you're really going to have three budgets. We have a county budget that is only going to pay for county services. And you have a city budget, which has its challenges. But we will only have a budget for city services and those services are well-defined. The third budget is what are, I consider the efficiencies of a unified government. Those services that are shared, like one HR department, one finance department, one legal department, one, one, uh, uh, planning and zoning department where we have a cost split. But we'll like, because each government pays a share of those expenses. And we need, and, and why I say that is we have people in the public that think we have county subsidize city when times warrant that, and/or we subsidize, have the city subsidize the county. Can't do that anymore. County, and we really can't ask, um, we, we can't really transfer mill rates from the county to the city in this time of need based because the county government, as we presented it here, is at a stable 20% reserve. You cannot compromise another government to help out another company. I don't want two suffering governments to deal with in a year or two. But we have to take a hard look at how we use debt. And, um, you know, also it, it's amazing. It's, 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 we just rely on it. Uh, you know, I don't know, someone told me, well, this is how we got through the great recession at the end of the first decade. Uh, but if that was the case, we should have weaned ourselves off of it. We didn't. Um, it could predate us, predate that. I don't know the historical issues, but the fact is I'm dealing with today. The other thing that we have to balance in, in all our budget, including capital, and what I've heard from the public in the last three weeks, they feel that the unified government historically in its 26-year history has not lived up to the promises to the public. And we need to have an honest conversation to start regaining the public trust of our people. I talk in truth, admit our mistakes and say, we will not happen, have that happen again. And if we have to codify those promises in ordinance, we'll do that. But right now you have a sizable lot of the population, particularly in the Northeast that feels slighted by the activities of, of, of the early, uh, uh, star bond stuff that started the legends. When they got off of it, it was supposed to go to property tax reduction, but it didn't happen. And our citizens have long memories. So the only way you deal with that is with truthful action and commitment and overt steps to say, okay, we're not going to open ourselves to those mistakes again. So I just want to say that this is going to be an interesting month exercise to have something to present to you before August 10th. Um, but it's manageable. But I will promise you all three budgets, well, the unified budget, government budget will be, state law mandates will be balanced. And on the use of debt, we will continue to have these discussions as Commissioner Bynum have because you can't just say, we're going to continue to bond, 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 bond and, um, and have it increase, 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 because two things will happen. Mill rates will go up to pay for it. And number two, bond agencies will see, do you have the coverage? And we may see our bond ratings go down. You don't want to see that because then borrowing costs go up.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Markley.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so two things. First with the star bonds. The public doesn't feel that it happened because they didn't maybe feel the impact as much as they wanted to with the star bond situation. But we did lower the bill rate eight mills over the four years immediately after payoff. So just to clarify, we did something. They didn't feel it because the property values went up accordingly. Um, so that's one thing. Budget-wise, I will say once again, I think that it would help our CMIP if we got rid of some stuff. And we've had that discussion about buildings. And we keep saying, yes, we should do that. That would be really smart, but we haven't done it. But it would really help if we got rid of some stuff we need to maintain and didn't have to maintain it anymore. So I'll continue to say that until someday we get rid of some buildings.
Commissioner Ramirez, and then right after you can roll right in, Commissioner Davis and roll right into Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't know if you're seeking direction, Mr. Administrator, but for me personally, yes, to everything that's on that screen at the moment. Yes, everything. Um, we already made the decision as a body within this budget cycle. We're making tough decisions. We're making tough decisions on what we have to do. We're going to have, we're, we're like the quote that Debbie said, we're having to change our thinking and how we do things. Um, it's funny that you, you know, Ms., uh, Mr. Johnson, you mentioned about, you know, there's a city budget, there's a county budget, that the conversation that Commissioner, uh, Sights and I were just having. You know, when we get our budget book, it's all together. It's all conglomerated. I can't tell what city, what's county. So, uh, that's, that was a request I was going to make tonight was we have a separate city budget book and a separate county budget book so that we can see what goes where. And it's more easier to read and more manageable for us to go through and digest. But, um, I 100% support the way and the path you're wanting us to take. Um, we need to it. We've had, unfortunately, in my opinion, and I'm sure some colleagues can, uh, will agree, past administrations then allow us to have these conversations. So I am happy that we're making these tough decisions. Um, and I hope our community, our residents, we can educate them and hopefully they'll understand the reason why we need to take these decisions. And I agree. I think we need to be upfront and say, yep, we made this, we made mistakes. We made wrong decisions in the past. Uh, but we're going to do diff, we're going to do it differently now. We're going to change our thinking on how to fix it and how to put everything together and make sure we are able to provide those services to our community and make sure that we always keep saying, Wyandotte County is the best place to live. Let's continue that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I haven't really said much, uh, colleagues, and you're welcome. Um, um, I, I, I haven't said much, uh, just, just kind of listening and gathering some, some insight and, um, I think what we need to be very honest about and, and what we need to be ambassadors of is the truth. We have an election coming up. And I hope to God that candidates that are running are doing what I did. When these meetings happened two years ago, I made it a point to watch and be informed. We need to make it politically acceptable and, and, and politically, um, sexy to be financially responsible. If we keep playing the game in choosing, I just choosing the seat and choosing incumbency, choosing power over what the right thing is to do, we will never get out of this situation. over what the right thing is to do, we will never get out of this situation. We see it happen in Washington DC all the time, where there are, you know, promises that are made, get in the office, and you just kind of walk those promises back. And you just kick the problem down the road, down the road, down the road. DC can print money, we can't. And we cannot take notes from national politics or politicians to fix local problems. Because our problems are real and people feel it. This is hard to stomach because it does mean that some of the things that we all said we wanted may not happen. And that's a hard conversation to have with our constituents to say, yes, this is very important, and I would rather us be financially stable in five years than for us to go bankrupt. It's hard to have those conversations, right? But it's conversations that we all will have to have, and we will have, we have to have the courage to say, maybe not this year, maybe at another time. But without that courage, we will repeat the same thing over and over and over again. Mr. Johnston, thank you so much. I'm absolutely for not only finding out what those promises are, but codifying them and holding ourselves accountable, because we just cannot, um, let this fall. This cannot fall on our watch. And, um, I wasn't here in Wyandotte County when some of these decisions were made, but I'm here now, and it's my responsibility to own whatever decisions are made and to say, I'm going to lead. And, um, I'm not going to kick it down. Uh, again, I'm not going to kick it down the road. I'm going to say, let's make the hard decisions now so that we can prosper in the future. And so, um, I agree, uh, with my colleague, Commissioner Markley. Absolutely. I think we really need for staff to dig in, what do we need to stop doing? We have a lot of conversations about other added amenities and things, which is great. Um, personally, I think we have too many parks. I would love to see some of those parks in the land bank. I think we own too much property as a unified government. I would love to see us get rid of some of those things. Um, we own too many darn bridges, just too many. Um, but we ha, so we have to have conversations on what is the responsible way to, to say, you know what? That's not going to be our responsibility anymore. Somebody else needs to own it. Somebody else needs to maintain it. But we can't hoard everything and try to restore it to its former glory. Because that just is not a future that is real. And so, um, I would love for us to do more work on that and stand ready to support those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm I'm excited to hear the dialogue I'm hearing this evening. What a year, what a difference a year makes, uh, in reference to really looking at what our issues are here with this budget. Some of us have been advocating for the last couple of years that we need to cut debt. We need to identify inefficiencies. We need to eliminate duplication. We need to become more efficient. And that is what happens when you start having those tough discussions about revenue neutral. Because that helps identify the financial situation we're in, but we had to be mandated by law to do that. And so now we've done that, and here we are tonight, and Mr. Johnson, thank you for a refreshing approach of how we want to look at things and how we should look at things, but more importantly, what we need to do to right this ship. Uh, I don't disagree with any of the comments that were made this evening. Uh, I am just a little befuddled, I guess, as to how this ship has turned from a year and a half, two years ago, when we didn't want to discuss cutting budgets, we didn't want to discuss identifying efficiencies. We wanted to continue to fund and continue to fund. And, uh, so, uh, I stand ready to do my part, whatever's necessary to put us in a financial fiscal sound position to enhance our bond rating, to cut our debt, to provide an efficient government for the, uh, citizens of Wyandotte County, and by all means to stabilize the evaluation and taxation within this community that is forcing out migration. Uh, so, thank you, uh, colleagues for giving me an opportunity to speak. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate your staff. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Johnston, I'm very pleased with what you bring forward to us for consideration. I have a couple of questions. We have a massive grant request, a ByState bridge grant request. I think you may have alluded to this in your remarks. So if the federal government, I can't remember if it's a RACE grant, um, or a, they have a bunch of acronyms.
Mega, mega grant.
Mega, mega grant. And it's mega.
Right.
And would replace the Kansas Avenue Bridge in a ByState cooperation with Kansas City, Missouri.
Right.
And we've made an obligation there to participate with our local match. So that would be a place where this, I appreciate what you bring, but I don't think we're turning down that grant if the Fed's call tomorrow and say, congratulations. So I just think we, that's a reality we must also look at because we will finance that bridge replacement. Unless you all decide you don't want to receive that mega federal grant for that bridge. So I think that's really important, that we keep those kinds of realities in front of us as well. I, um, I am unaware of Kansas City, Kansas budget items that were paid for with our county dollars. So if that has occurred in the past, I would be interested in what those were. I've been here eight years and I simply don't know if that has occurred in a way that was not openly shared with the public and the commission. I simply don't know the answer. If it has occurred, I would like to know it. Um, so yes, do I support a county budget that pays for county things? Absolutely. Do I support a city budget that pays for city things? Absolutely. Think that's what we've been doing. If there's evidence otherwise, I would truly like to know it. Every single thing here is not broken, and I do not subscribe to that mentality, period. We have a ton of wonderful people who live here, a ton of wonderful staff who live and work here, who've been working, and, and frankly, we're all fairly high-quality individuals. And I just don't think I really want you to understand that I appreciate this conversation. I simply don't subscribe to the notion that everything has been broken up till now. I just don't. So, uh, if we could have our conversations based around making sure that we're also recognizing the good things that have been done, such as what Commissioner Markley points out. We did try to bring tax relief from the Starbond payoff as an example, and we did try to bring budget money to the places where we knew we needed it, and in my humble opinion, funding our Public Works Division after everything we've been told about the critical nature of the infrastructure that we face, that's not a want in my opinion. It's a need. Maybe we have to go a year without. I don't know. And I'm, you know, semi joking when I proffer to you, well, if we can't have 25%, can we have 10? I know we don't know the answer to that right now. But it's not a want. Infrastructure, pavement preservation, bridges, streetlights, these things are what make a city. Without them, you don't have a city. So anyway, um, had to throw my two cents on the table. But overarching my comment to you and the rest of my fellow commissioners is, I'm really glad you're here, and I appreciate the difficult conversation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this, I, I say this, the, speaking for myself, and I hope I can speak for myself. It wasn't a state law or administration of this past year that forced me to have this conversation. It, it's the it's the red on the paper and us having a fresh new administrator who's allowing us to have the discussions. Not because of the state, I don't want to be out there, but I'm forced because of a state law. It was not. Or the past year administration. I just want to say that out there, that I can speak for myself, and I hope I can. Thank you.
I guess I just want to add is that I appreciate all the commissioners' comments. If I intimated that I thought everything was broken, that's not what the message is. The message is, we have a dire situation that we have to deal with. Um, does that mean that, uh, road projects, bridge projects don't get done? Maybe not at the level that people want it. Also have to remember, we have other departments that have capital needs. We have a s, a schedule that's been part of a firehouse replacement program. Those things cost 10-plus million dollars a unit. It's, it, it's amazing. And so that's competing with bridges, competing with roads, competing with with other infrastructure needs facing our city. But you only got this much money to work with. Not like this and saying bonding is going to give us that capacity. That means the taxpayers are going to pay for it. Well, we have to be very judicious in how we use debt. That's the only message that I have. We do have a higher debt load. We've talked with our bond counsel. They're saying you better think about doing some debt management. We've had our financial consultant, Baker Tilly, tell us, yeah, you have higher debt than a community your size should have. So, but, you know, I, I also want to say, I, I, I don't want to say I was in my commentary, uh, disrespecting any previous elected officials. Decisions were made with the situations they were facing. But then, as we know, world changes. New things happen. And government budgets need to adapt to those changes. And I think we got in a rut. That's all I can think of because of the magnitude of the situation that we're at is that we didn't pay attention to the changes that we should have reacted to. But we do, uh, we do have challenges, and it's going to be an interesting two, three years as we really get a handle and and get Kansas City, Kansas budget where it really needs to be. So if, apologize if anybody thought I was negative. I was like, say, this is reality. And that's all it is. Thank you.
Um, I, I'll also add, um, and, and I do agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Bynum. There's, listen, the, these issues that we are seeing didn't come out of nowhere, right? So on one hand, it's, you want to, to deliver for your, we want to deliver for our constituents. We all want to go back, right? To our respective districts or areas and say, look what I did, right? Finding that balance between saying, look what I did, look what we did together, you asked for it, we delivered, and also being financially responsible is really where the rubber meets the road. Mr. Uh, Johnston, um, I, again, thank you for, for, and thank you, staff, for bringing this conversation to us. I think one of the things we probably want to consider is particularly within the CIP, maybe a district-by-district breakdown? Or something that gives each commissioner something that everyone can say, this year, this is what's getting done in that district, right? It's not everything, but it is something year by year that can say to people, here's the progress that we are making. Here's what wasn't done last year is being done this year. And then here, here's the other things that we want to do. Um, I think with our CIP, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, and there could be a little bit more maybe information on just making it constituent-friendly and saying, in your neighborhood, here are the things that are happening. But, but we, we have to find that balance, right? A dystopian future is not going to be, none of us are going to be here in a few years, right? If we just sell, right, bloom and gloom and, and nothing good is happening. We can still, um, work on ourselves and deliver on some of these key projects. Um, which, which leads me to, to the other, you know, two points. It's super important, I think, for us as elected officials to be educated and to ensure that the information that we are giving out to the public is accurate. Um, I had one constituent come up to me, uh, at my last town hall, almost a month ago, saying, you know, for Home Field, um, we aren't getting anything in taxes. We aren't getting anything from the project. And I'm just like, where, where did you? I sit on the committee, where did you hear that, right? We have to be the biggest ambassadors of truth in our community. And to the candidates that are running, I pray that we are getting ambassadors for truth. It is easy to take information and twist it and go with what makes people angry. That gets the likes, that gets the shares, that doesn't get the unified government anywhere. I would hope that we would, would take the higher road and say, let's think about where we want our community to be in a decade and for our community to be prosperous. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, I, I want to respond to my colleague. I spoke over that individual. While they were speaking, I want to apologize to the body. I know better. It's just the response. I should have waited till my turn. Commissioner Ramirez, I apologize for stepping on your conversation.
Stites District 7. Mr. Mr. Johnston, clearly we made the right decision. And I want to, uh, commend the search firm for bringing you to us, right? We, we, the people have asked, and they've asked us for help. And finally, I don't really care how we got to this point. I don't care if we felt like we were forced to or not, but the people have asked. And we are having this hard conversation right now, right? We're being responsive. Um, I look at this, uh, a lot like just having a, um, a cut or a bleed, uh, on, on your body, right? We, we got to just stop the bleeding right now. Doesn't mean we got to cut off our leg or cut off the arm or, you know, we're not, we're not done. We got to stop the, what, our, our current process. We got to, to can, continue to live, we got to stop the bleeding. And I think that's where we're at right now. That's what we're doing. We, we, we know, we've identified that we're on a, a crash course for, um, bankruptcy if we continue the, the direction that we're going. I, I, I would like to think, I agree, uh, with Commissioner Davis. I believe that we have too many city parks. We got them all over the place, right? Little small ones, things that really don't even get used, in that, in my opinion. But there's some things that we can get rid of, building structures that would take, to, to really get that, uh, get that number down. I'm, I look forward to hearing this budget. And I appreciate the conversation that we've had. Staff, thank you for what you guys brought forward to us tonight. And, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, staff. Thank you, Administrator. Thank you, Commission. Um, I think what we're hearing tonight, um, for those that may be in sight and sound of this meeting, is a commitment from this commission to make sure that your unified government, uh, moving forward, um, is operating fiscally responsible. That this unified government and this elected body is going to deliver on the promise.
of a commitment that I know each one of these commissioners has made to meet your reasonable. And I like to point out reasonable expectations, and I have to say reasonable because we are faced with some challenges when you talk about our budget situation. And hard decisions are going to be made, but what you are seeing is is a realization that these challenges have to be taken head-on. And that's the leadership that you see around this table. And so it is refreshing that we are facing the, the hard truths as we move forward and looking at these hard truths and trying to find real solutions to some of these problems that we know impact the lives of real people every single day. And again, hard decisions are going to be have to made, but it's shared. But I firmly believe that because we're having these discussions now, and this Commission has made a commitment to avoid the 2026 red, you can call it bankruptcy, whatever you want to call it, that's there, that that commitment is made. And I'd like to reassure the public because of this commitment that you're seeing from this Commission today, that I'm highly optimistic that the 2026 bankruptcy will not occur here in Wyandotte County. Because you have this type of leadership around the table that is committed to making sure that Wyandotte County is that great place to live, work, and raise a family. And I think one of the things that, that I've realized is that we cannot continue to tax, spend, and borrow in the manner that we've been doing it, because it is detrimental to the, the economic health, stability of our community. And so we have to find ways to streamline, to cut responsibly, if we can do so. And find new and inventive ways to operate a government in a way that still provides essential services that our residents come to expect. And so I don't want our public to see these meetings as anything like the sky is falling. Because I know that we have a staff and an administrator of professionals that are here. They're going to make sure to, they do everything they can cooperating with this Commission and you, the public, to make sure that Wyandotte County is solid and will be just as strong as it's been in the past, well into, to the future. I know that when we talk about efficiencies and where we could cut and things of that nature, some of those questions have come up. I offer this mayor and my team. When I came into office, I, I have eight task force. And I don't care who gets the credit. I'm not here for kudos, credit for to be a long-term mayor to say, look what I did. I don't care. I just want what's best for Wyandotte County and what's best for the people. I came to this Commission with a olive branch, saying, let's work together. Because we have to. It's not about me, never was, never will be. I've served 32 years here. And, and I've spent my entire adult life in public service. I don't need any attaboys. I don't want them. I want Wyandotte County to be the winner and for this body of staff, community, and commission to share in any successes that can come. But again, I'm offering and saying, we've got to work together and we've got to communicate as professional, as leaders, as adults. And your mayor's office is still willing to do that. So I challenge those that may struggle in thinking otherwise. I don't need any power. I've heard that, oh, the mayor wants, is power-hungry. I don't have any power. I don't vote. I have very limited authority over agenda. This is a weak mayor's form of government. It's not New York where I can hire and fire and fix potholes and do any of those things. It requires that we work together, that we leverage a common good of this community to come together, to work together and find solutions. And that's what our public expects us to do. That's why they elect us. To work together as professionals, as leaders. They don't expect anything less. So I, I have to say that there are eight task forces. One of them is the efficiencies committee to look at those various things on, do we cut buildings? Do we cut projects? Do we cut? And it should be led by a Commissioner. Working with the community to find those and then bringing those recommendations through the mayor's office, because I do have the ability to push things through to standing committee and to full commission for you all to decide whether that's something that you want. So if any commissioners are willing, I still got a task force. Some of you are on those task forces, and thank you for staying in there and doing the things that are necessary. But I don't want anybody thinking this is about me. I'm not going to be your mayor forever. This is about Wyandotte County and what's best. I'm not a politician. You've heard me say that. I don't, Chester Owens said it best. I'm an elected official. I don't have to be here. I was asked to be here. I have, I'm not going to be a career politician, so if you think I am, think again. That's not my motivation. I'm not here for book deals. I'm not here for upping on my come up. I've served this community honorably in a variety of ways. I'm only here because I came back to Wyandotte County. I was one of those disgruntled people that moved out of Wyandotte County. I came back because people asked me to, and they said they want it better. And I know that I share that same sentiment as every Commissioner at this table. We want what's best for Wyandotte County. I cannot stress it enough. We've got to work together to face these hard challenges and solution and whatever political differences that may be there. I just ask, as your mayor, let's set them aside. Let's find common ground. Let's work on the things that we know we can work on. There should be no divisions between your mayor's office and this Commission or this community or staff. There's too much at stake. People's lives rely on us and depend on us working together. I don't know what caused this, but if I'm wrong, if I caused it at the very beginning, if I came out too strong and maybe airing things and maybe not communicating, I'm, I'm mad enough to say I'm sorry. But I think we all have the ability to do better for our constituents. We all ran, we all got elected, and I think now is the time to say, let's come to the table and work together on these hard issues. And we all need to be at the table working together. I want to thank those commissioners that are still on these task force and the ones that have volunteered to take up other issues. But these issues and these task forces aren't to, to highlight what Mayor Garner did. I could care less about any type of attaboys. I don't want them. I was like that when I was a police officer. I don't need them. I'm not in public service because I want people to say, look what the mayor did. I want us to work together so we can say what we did for this community, and this community can be happy of the choices they made of this elected body. So I challenge us to work together in that regard. And I also challenge anyone that would like to get on the efficiency committee as we walk through this budget process. There's a chair position open that requires a Commissioner to take the lead on that. To have that conversations that Commissioner Markley brought forward, that Commissioner Davis brought forward. And so if anybody wants to work with community members that are there at the ready on this task force to work with our staff and work with the community on that, that's still available. I don't know what else to say is, is that, other than thank you, Commission, for entertaining and having these hard conversations and, and having a deep dive look at how we can do better as a governing body and a commission, I, I really do think it's refreshing. And, and for the public, I just want to say that the best is yet to come for Wyandotte County. And I don't want anybody to be discouraged about our challenges today because we're facing them and we will get through them. And we will continue to ensure that Wyandotte County is a great, safe place to live, work, and raise a family. So thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I think you have remarks.
Well, Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate your statements. I think you answered what I was going to ask because I wanted to kind of see if there was a wheel of this Commission to look at our parks, look at our buildings that are, that could be better utilized or to be sold. And so I'm, I'm certainly not shit going up. You know, I'm certainly not saying I want to leave that community, that committee. But I do agree with what you're saying. I, I do agree with both Commissioner Markley and Mr. Davis. We need to look at, you know, how we can move some property and some assets that are not as useful as they ought to be. So, thank you.
Well, we, we had that committee four years ago, and we did that Amoresco study. And we talked about what we were going to do with that study, and then we didn't follow through. So as far as I'm concerned, the work has been done. We had the study. We were ranking things we thought we might be able to get rid of. We all said, let's get rid of some stuff. And, and then we just didn't move forward with it. So, I mean, I guess we can have another committee, but we don't really need another committee. We just need to do it. We need to do what we said we were going to do and use the information we gathered when the committee met last time.
Mayor, maybe we can see that, you know, have that study brought forward again, so we can maybe look at that again with fresh eyes and see if there are efficiencies to find that way. Like she said, if there's work that's done, that's going to be part of this hard work, right?
Thank you. That preceded me. So if, if staff has that information on that study, love to get that to the Administrator to get to the Commission. I think that would help in this conversation as we move through the budget process. So, okay, well, Administrator, I, I think you'll, you'll find that. And if we can get that from staff, that'd be great.
We'll unearth it somehow.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commission, staff, great work. Thank you, Administrator, and thank you for the public that's been watching. At this time, I will adjourn this special session to have a motion.
David's second.
Have a motion and a second. clerk, roll call.
Roll call, Johnson.
Aye.
Barkley.
Aye.
Stites.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows. Townsend. McKeonan.
Aye.
I got Commissioner, thank you. Ramirez.
Aye.
You're adjourned.
Still, still.